...you have a call on present and in thirty-four, it's going to be those regulations, state regulations, we'll write these weapons and have one of each of our December full meeting, the last meeting of this year. And that's the same possible right through the semester. That's true. And uh, Mr. Hickerson, would you offer?
Yes, uh, Mr. Cox is going to lead us through the due patience.
Our new faculty. Apparently Father, I thank you for today, thank you for the love seen and grace that we're receiving, and thank you for putting us in a place where we can work with the kids in this district and the community, and Lord asks that you just surround this district and keep us safe and free from any harm, and be with us as we make decisions that are best for the district and provide it with knowledge and wisdom that we need. I ask you, thanks in Jesus' name, amen.
I've got a couple celebrities to honor.
I sure do. Uh, the first person I'm gonna invite is uh, Landry Bright. Landry, thanks for joining, Joey Bright. She is in fourth grade at Elder Elementary, and her hobbies and interests is Miss Kami's All-Star Competition Cheerleader, and loves to go to the Tarleton football at basketball games, and loves to do creative art projects. Our next celebrity is August Shumay. August's parents are Kristen Chubbishumay, and he is in fifth grade, and his hobbies and interests are baseball and basketball, and likes to play outside and go to baseball games, and also likes collecting baseball cards. Thank you.
Everybody, please, rise if that will.
(Inaudible) 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 of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. (Inaudible) Texas flag, and the religion is to be justice, one state under God, one invisible. (Inaudible) city, we will be a high-reign model of educational excellence.
Okay, we're gonna move our kids all around a little bit, and uh, we have our recitals up at the front, we've got some papers to leave to be somewhere, uh, at another meeting. So, Mr. Hickerson?
Yeah, our first recognition will be our Joshua High School R.C. volleyball team. Our R.C. volleyball team is led by Coach Jordan Weller, and the Lady Alice R.C. volleyball team is being celebrated for their remarkable performance during the twenty-four season. With an overall record of twenty-nine wins and fifteen losses, and an impressive twelve and two in district play, they secured a commendable second-place finish. This season marked their second five-district championship title in six years, beating Fort Worth, Moore Side, and it was their sixth playoff appearance in seven years. Additionally, nine players were honored with all-district awards. And I'll have Coach Weller to go over those awards in just one second. In the lineup with Joshua's vision statement of being an highly famed model of educational excellence, all sixteen members were recognized on the academic all-district team for their exceptional academic achievements. Another significant accomplishment for the twenty-four team is that African's celebrated last year as the winningest team with twenty-seven victories. This year's squad has now set a new record as the winningest team in the history of Joshua Program with twenty-nine victories. Congratulations, Lady Alice.
Alright, um, so we have nine girls recognized at our district meeting this year. Um, this was voted on by the other coaches in our district. Uh, we had three named to honorable mention, oh, sorry, two named to honorable mention, and that's gonna be our sophomore, Rue Vincent, wait, yes, and uh, junior Ava Abbott. Okay, we have three named to our second team, all-district, that's gonna be Addison Leckie, Maddie Lacy, and Ray Cole. Uh, we have two selected to first team all-district, uh, that's gonna be sophomore Brayden Holland, and then junior, it's like allowed, she's not here, she didn't play practice tonight. And then we secured two superlatives this year, so this is one of the highest honors that you can get, um, at these district meetings. Morgan Collier was named A-five-A Offensive Player of the Year and First Team All-District, and then Tyler Cool was named A-five-A Defensive Player of the Year and First Team All-District.
Noah is a senior and was named a commended student in the twenty-twenty-five National Merit Scholarship Program. Noah earned this recognition by scoring in the top fifty thousand students nationwide who took the pre-SAT National Merit Scholarship Qualifying Test in twenty-twenty-three. Approximately one point three million high school juniors face the PSAT and the National Merit Scholarship Qualifying Test each year. Let's give Noah a round of applause. Alright, so our next, um, recognition tonight is the Elder Elementary School Steel Band. Uh, we started this last year to try to bring everybody in the holiday spirit here, bringing in a program that plays some holiday tunes for us, and so we'll turn it over to our, uh, Bill May.
Hi, everybody, my name is Barbara Lutton, and I'm a music teacher at Elder, and I just wanna take a moment to thank some people and tell you a little bit about our group. So, first of all, thank you everyone for being here this evening, and thank you Joshua I.C. School Board for giving us this opportunity to perform for you and our community. The Elder Owls of Steel, first we had eight years ago during the twenty-seventh team, twenty-eight team school year. At that time, we only had fifteen members, and only three of these steel pans, and all were keyboard instruments you see over there. Since then, our group has grown to twenty-three members, and we now have eight steel pans, which is really awesome. Every September, fourth and fifth grade students are eligible to audition to be part of Steel Band, and the students who are selected to be in our group rehearse twice a week, so every Tuesday and Thursday, these kiddos are with me for about an hour after school, putting in a lot of hard work. And I'm so proud of all these kiddos. We rehearse from October to the very beginning of April, so they really dedicate a lot of their time, and also so do the families. Thank you guys for sharing your kids with me. Um, our ensemble is very unique, especially for an elementary school. We play a variety of percussion instruments, including drums and small handheld instruments played by our engine group, group, engine room, raise your hands. So that's one of our groups. We also have a lot of keyboard instruments, raise your hand if you were playing a keyboard instrument on our first team. We have some metal-able keyboards, but the stores of our group are just steel pans. We actually have two types, we have a single type and a type called double seconds. Um, the pans you see here were actually built in Trinidad, and then they were imported to Austin, where they're fine tuned by my piano tutor and provider, and then, um, she delivers them to me where I pick them up from her. So there's a lot that goes into these instruments, and they had to travel a long way before they made it to their forever home in Joshua, Texas. Occasionally, you find pans at high schools or middle schools around the state, but it's pretty special to have them at an elementary school. Um, I'm so grateful to this community for all the support we've received over the years. Every year, I hold a Christmas for fundraiser that helps me be able to fund this ensemble. Um, without my fundraiser, it would be nearly impossible for me to purchase the instruments and pay for them to get tuned. Um, and I also received generous generation from the Elder PTSO in the past and other members of the Joshua community, to which I am totally grateful. I would like to thank the Elder staff, my principals, Miss Narcisse, and Cassidy, and Miss Smith, the Elder PTSO, my wonderful assistant director, Leah Hutto, and the Steel Band families for your continued support. Um, we also have a very exciting performance opportunity coming up in April. Um, we've been invited to perform at the TCU Percussion Festival, and we're gonna be performing on Saturday, April fifth. This is actually our second time being invited to play at the festival, so we're really, really excited to return. We're gonna be playing a few pieces by ourselves, but we're also gonna play some music with the TCU Steel Band, so it's a really awesome opportunity for our students to get to perform with some college musicians as well. Um, thank you once again, everyone, for being here. We're gonna play two Christmas pieces for you. The first one is "Oh, Christmas Tree." We have one more piece for you, we're gonna be playing "Golly Old Saint Nicholas." Thank you so much, parents. I'm gonna take your kids over here so they can put in their shirts, and if you're planning on leaving, you can leave us in the courtyard. So thank you so much, guys.
Thank you guys, appreciate it.
Okay, we'll move back into our record report. (Inaudible)
Yeah, in our workshop, we reviewed our enrollment report, our attendance report, our ADA report, our child insurance report, property tax collection, our monthly financial reports, our monthly and yearly status of special revenue funds, our quarterly cash investment report, our check register, our police department report, our calendar events, and now we'll start with our fall athletic scorecard. Coach Yorman, you got the floor.
Feel free to play instruments. I don't know if you want that. I'm Danny Yorman, uh, I'm the athletic director and head football coach. Um, first, I would like to say that, um, I'm really excited and impressed with, uh, the success that we have had at the lower levels, uh, over the last several years, and if you look, um, dating back to twenty-twenty, and look across from the seventh grade and eighth grade, uh, records, changing, uh, conferences, and the beef against other schools that are more similar to, uh, our schools, uh, we've had a lot of success, and I'm really proud of that. Um, really excited about the fact that, uh, there's a lot less, uh, red and a more yellow, uh, than in years past, and, uh, this year, our varsity was able to put, um, five and five record together, which, uh, broke a twenty-seven-year streak of losing seasons. So, uh, really proud of what the, our staff has done and our kids have done, and the growth that we've had, uh, over the years. Um, this year, at our all-district meeting, uh, doesn't happen very often, but we had, uh, our staff was put up for coaches of the year, um, in a, in a very impressive, uh, district with, uh, some very impressive coaches, and, um, at the end of the regular season, our, uh, our state rank finished at number thirty-three in, in five-eight division one, uh, which dating back to two thousand eight, that's the first time, uh, the, the ranking has been, uh, better than sixty, sixty-five. Uh, so we had a really good season this year. Our goal is to, uh, take what we've done in the offseason and figure out a way to turn the heat up a little bit, and make, uh, put our kids in some more pressure situations, because I feel like that's one of the things that, uh, that kept us from, from getting to six, seven, possibly eight wins this past year. And, uh, so we're gonna spend offseason trying to figure out how we can do that, and, uh, really excited about the future of the program.
Thank you, Coach.
Thank you. Okay, um, I'm Jordan Mowrath, I am the high school volleyball coach. Um, we are all green, all the way down this year. Um, our program is starving from the middle school and up. I'm super proud of our coaches from seventh grade all the way up through high school. Um, like y'all said earlier, we have, we broke home school record for wins this season. Um, I graduated seven seniors this year, but I have nine returning, um, I have thirty-three returning overall back to the program out of forty-three, uh, so we have a super solid core group coming back. Uh, we've already started offseason, we're hitting it pretty hard, because our goal is still to win that district championship, which we were shy of this year. We captured our second five-district title, uh, in sev- in seven years. Um, we picked up a very tough, very, very good mark I don't team in the second round, who actually went to state, but as I tell the girls, to be the best, you gotta play the best, um, and I thought we challenged them pretty well in our set three. Um, so I'm super proud of them, uh, really excited to see what the, what next year holds for us.
Coach Russell, Coach Brooks? Alright, hey, I'm, I'm Coach Brooks, um, I coach the cross-country boys, uh, but we do everything pretty much together for Steel. Um, so, our varsity guys, and we've got a lot of green up there, we're pleased with that, um, but our varsity guys, um, got back to regionals in just a pretty hellacious boys district. Like, we are pretty decent, um, second-best regional finishing school history, and Brayden Peachey, um, was the second guy, um, in the last, at least the last twenty-four years, maybe ever, um, to make it to the state. Like, I can't find results beyond that. Um, and may, just a, just a great, a delightful group to coach this year. Everything we want Al Athletics to be about was those guys, they're so much fun, and so proud of all of them, and Brayden in particular, but, um, one thing we're trying to push in the offseason, on both the boys and the girls side, um, is just being in racing situations all year long. So, like, they did a, they did a little five-game Cleveland last one, they could feel like they're gonna run one clear board, um, you know, that's, they've run all year the last three or four years, but just getting them, getting them in stock where they can race together, not super seriously or anything like that, but they can have some success in that, we're looking forward to that. So, really proud of them, y'all, y'all should be too, they're pretty awesome.
Thank you, Coach.
I'm Craig Russell, the girls' cross-country coach. Uh, kinda what Coach Yorman was mentioning at first, if you look down here at the junior high level, uh, all green, at least one team, boys or girls, in each grade won the district championship. Um, as far as the girls go at the high school level, we had no seniors this year, so really young. We've got three or four eighth-grade girls coming up that are really gonna help us, uh, in the future, along with, kinda piggybacking on with Coach Brooks, cross-country and even track, we really don't have an offseason. Uh, we don't have an official start date, we don't have an official end date, so you go all the way back to June, we're running two to three days a week, July, we're three to four days a week, so these kids are running all the time. Uh, we just need to get on, get a more competitive, you know, maybe run four or five miles, but now let's compete, try to get it at least once a month, uh, so hopefully that'll help in the future. Thank y'all.
Thank you, Coach. All right, so we've got our scorecards, and so now we'll be off to our campus presentation. We've got Elder Elementary and the Kent Academy.
Alright, good evening, school board, and Mr. Hickerson, and Joshua community. Hey, thank you so much for letting us share, uh, our Steel Band, and they work really hard, and this one does a phenomenal job. I can't imagine just getting them from never creating any kind of music in, in three months, what they can do, so. Um, real quickly, um, I'd like to- Real quickly, I'd like to share a little glimpse about our achievers breakfast. It takes place each grading period at our school, and our amazing counselor is Warby Ten. Spearheads this celebration. Students are nominated by their teachers and classmates for demonstrating characteristics or key traits. This year, our focus is on soar, and that is self-control, ownership, achievement, and respect. During this special event in the library, students are honored with their parents as guests. Their teacher's praise is read aloud through a letter, and we enjoy a breakfast together. Something super special, and we've had a lot of parents just compliment us on the sincerity and the authentic environment of the small celebration. So we put together a short video, and it also was created by one of our parents, Tony Nix, who is also the owner of Apetite Graps.
Hey, good morning, everyone. Thank you so much for coming to our first nine weeks or first quarter achiever breakfast.
Buenos dias, muchas gracias por venir a celebrar, y este momento especial para los primeros estudiantes sobresalientes de las primeras nueve semanas.
So this year, our achievement in HHS and for our elder students, it's soar to success. The S stands for self-control, the O stands for ownership, the A stands for achievement, and the R is for respect.
Este año, una tema importante en Joshua ISD para nosotros estudiantes y nuestros estudiantes en Elder es celebarte al éxito. En inglés, el éxito. Cada nueve semanas nos enfocamos en unos ratos de caracteres diferentes. El acrótico en inglés significa la S, enfocando en el dominio propio. La O significa orgullo y responsabilidad, y la A significa logro, y la R significa respeto.
So your student was chosen by his or her classmates and classroom teacher for displaying the soar character traits, and especially these first nine weeks for showing self-control. So we are so proud of these students, and want to thank you for sharing the lessons.
Please, what a blessing and privilege it is to have you in class this year. When our class voted for achiever, your peers said the following things about you. I voted for the least because he always says the right thing. Tia Ella was our student achiever because she demonstrates incredible self-control. No matter what, Tia Ella is always doing what is right. She's very respectful, a hard worker, and dedicated to her education. Self-control has given you such a superpower at school. It helps you think before you act. For example, if you're in class and really wanna shout out an answer, self-control reminds you to raise your hand and say. It helps you stay focused during lessons and wait your turn when playing games on the playground. A Cole is that student, and he practices self-control with very little effort. You were my first choice for our soar character traits. You come to class and set the example for our class academically, and especially with your actions. Whether it's helping you clean up the classroom, to lining up quietly, or most importantly, being kind to our classroom family, you never disappoint. Thank you for soaring so high and setting expectations above the norm. Way to go. I am very impressed by your self-control and ability to stay calm and respectful at all times. You lead by example, and your classmates look up to you. You are such an outstanding young man. Continue to always do the right thing, and good things will come your way. Congratulations to you. You were the first student achiever for our fourth grade class for self-control. I am extremely proud to recognize sweet Maddie. Maddie does demonstrate self-control with her sweet demeanor in class, and she thinks before she sleeps, speaks, and completes her assignments with the best.
I certainly, I mean, I would like all the parents and everybody, you guys, because you're already achievers breakfast. And so much to us, having your child see for the character means more than you guys can imagine. When Chris gets it, he comes in, he's super excited, it just like makes his day, the achiever. So we appreciate everything that you guys do and the teachers do for acknowledging our kids for the character that they are.
Thank you for letting us share.
I think we have any last items?
Never been. No, we did not.
So we have any? Subject B, Senator Snapp, agenda items?
Okay, so we have our amendments from our previous meeting, the break teeth meeting. No budget amendments at this time. We do have a purchase over 50,000 that Ms. Martin reviewed during our workshop. And so my recommendation would be approve the consent items that I discussed.
I make a motion to approve the consent items that's discussed.
Motion by Ms. Brooks, I hear a second.
Second.
Second by Ms. Wilson. Any further discussion or questions? All favor. Bye, look. We're gonna skip over. Subject B, audit, the auditor is on her way, she should be here any time, so we're gonna wait until she gets here. Go to. Subject C. Subject C could consider approval of the US Department of Labor 2024 prevailing wage rates for Johnson County for district construction projects.
Okay, so government code 2258022 requires the district determine prevailing wage scale for construction projects, and that prevailing wage scale be published in the construction and bid documents of each project. That recommendation, or excuse me, that the document is there for you guys to review. My recommendation is that the board trustees approve the item and adopt the US Department of Labor prevailing wage rates for Johnson County as presented.
I hear a motion.
I'll make a motion to adopt the prevailing wage rates.
Motion by Mr. Kevin Lee.
Second.
Second by Mr. Hunter. Any further discussion or questions? All favor? Bye, look. Anything else?
Subject B. This is the audit.
You got the, teach music, teach back, could you play us a cute thing?
Corey said he wanted to learn.
Yeah, teach me a different.
I tell you, that's a place to go.
Guest artist.
It's a place.
It is.
Well, we're gonna wait till the auditor, and she, she had another school that she had to do, and so. And then she's got. Late, get the weight from there, because she checked us, said she was later in Charlotte. We got to wait on her.
Yeah. Come on. Tell us about playing for the Mavericks, what's that like?
It's really awesome. I think this is my seventh or eighth year being over the drum line, and it still kind of feels like my first year, just because I just feel really blessed to be there and whatnot.
Do you do every game or every?
I go through every game, so I usually play singles for the Mavs, sometimes I play some extra, but this other guy and I swap out games, so I'll be actually at this Thursday's game. Some other day this week. Not the Christmas Day game, I'll be out. Sometimes I get to like pass the players.
I'd like to also commend Ms. Kathy's, highlighting Ella today. Kilm goes out of her way to reach out to every one of her staff members, significant others, or some members of their family, and we received some emails being very, very thankful of a husband, wife, mom, dad, someone gets a phone call, she bribes on her staff, and that's tremendous, but thank you.
That's awesome.
That's great.
Where do you practice?
Where do we rehearse?
Yes.
We rehearse in my music room every Tuesday, Thursday.
During school time?
After school. We get started, so duty hits around 3:50, so I get back in my room around that time. We practice until 4:45.
Well, I guarantee you, personally, that you do it at school, I guarantee you. I'll put it out.
Do you need help moving all the way?
We're gonna actually slide some hours of waiter. Are y'all okay?
Hey, I'm so glad because when this first came to your patience. It was only, you saw it from the beginning, you wanted, oh, you see your crowd? Yes.
Good, what's that, guy?
Yeah, it'd be kind of a holiday to go one at a time.
...